We'll give everyone to the Fitchburg Common Council meeting for May 28, 2024. The first order is to call to the order to the meeting and second is place a stand up for the place of allegiance.
Next roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen is delayed. Mayor Ratafrada?
Here.
Alder Danzler Jr.?
Here.
Alder Gerhardt?
Here.
Alder Herps?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Alder Vafadari?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You do have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next we move to item four, public appearance for non-agenda items. We have a couple of residents that wishes to speak for non-agenda items. So I want to call you to the microphone and then you have three minutes to speak, okay? So the first person is Heidi Lucarelli. She wishes to speak in support of, I don't know where it is, the Chicory Meadow Park. Okay. Yes. And Heidi, you have three minutes. And then I want to call Lorinda Bowles, also for the same issue, and then I will call Lori Zink. Yeah, okay.
Okay. My name is Heidi Lucarelli. Thank you for your time this evening. And I am here, I was here at your last city council meeting to talk about our Chicory Meadow parks and park, and specifically the courts in our park are in disrepair and much need of some refurbishment. And I just wanted to remind everyone, as you are considering when and how to get, hopefully get this accomplished for us, that the park, the Chicory Meadow Park, is a great neighborhood hub for, we have kids who go to private schools, we have kids who are in the West District, we have kids who are in the Madison School District, and that is a great place that young and old like to hang out there. And they play on the basketball courts, they play on the tennis courts, they play on the pickleball courts, and it's not just the kids, but it's their parents, too. So I am here again to ask if you guys can please help us to get that goal accomplished. And then I also wanted to thank Dave and Joe, virtually, for the last meeting we had. They both felt like this really deserved to be on the dock for Fitchburg renovations. And then I just wanted to say, I don't know if you all saw the rainbow out there, but I thought it was a good sign of hope, and I hope together we can get this done.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. So next is Lorinda.
Hi, I'm Lorinda Bowles. I was a teacher in the Verona District for many years. I live in Seminole. I use those courts every week. I'm on a women's league. We play two times Thursday, Tuesdays and Thursdays on there. I see people there all the time, kids. We pull in neighbors from four or five different neighborhoods in there that use those courts. We've got Seminole Hills, we've got the Highlands, we've got Harlan. I mean, you know the area, but these courts pull a lot of people. And so I'm just here to really plead that we get these funded and get it going soon. We were playing there yesterday, and some of the lines are now peeling off. All this rain's making things a little bit worse. So I'm grateful that you've left it on the docket, but I'm here to just really plead that we pass this and get this moving so that we can continue to use them because they're really in bad shape. So, thank you so very much.
No, thank you. Lori?
Hi. My name's Lori Zink. I have lived in the neighborhood, I lived on Yarmouth, just down the bike path from the Chicory Meadows Courts. And prior to that, I lived in Arbor Hills for 23 years. So for the last 50 years, I've really been in this neighborhood. I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner, and I worked at Leopold School for 23 years. The Chicory Meadows Tennis Courts really are an asset to the neighborhoods that the others were mentioning. And I just think it's really important. I'm 71 years old, I, you know, and it encourages fitness, and it's just really nice to walk down the path and be there and be able to get some exercise, since I don't move as well as I used to. I'd just like to reinforce what the others said, and I think anything that draws neighbors together helps build stronger neighborhoods and stronger communities.
Thank you. So I'm going to make a point of clarification for you. We are working in the capital improvement plan, that is practically an infrastructure plan now. And one of the things that I am, we're going to bring forward in that plan is to fix the Chicory Meadow and the Swan Creek Tennis Court next year. So they are going to be in the dock for redo it next year. It will need, you know, the council approval, and I hope they are going to approve that, but we have the money to do it. They are coming next year, 2025. So, okay? So, yeah. So, you have to wait another season, so. And you should come when, during the CIP presentation to support that project, okay? I will send you an email, you know what I mean? Yeah, keep me informed, okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, so next, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
And I have a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to move item 10A1, Resolution R 10224, to right now on the agenda.
Okay, all those in favor of moving resolution, huh? I need a second.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Three seconds, I don't know, you choose. So all those in favor of moving Resolution R dash 102 dash 24, after the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, what is, okay. So here we have Greg, our financial consultant, so.
So I'll move.
You're going to move, okay.
Yeah, I'll move approval of Resolution R 10224, authorizing the issuance and sale of $8,790,000, General Obligation Promissory Notes Series 2024A. And I changed the number from what's listed on the agenda because that's actually what Greg will present. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so Greg, all yours.
Good evening. I'll provide an overview of the sale results for the promissory notes that were sold this evening. Just to recap, the purpose of these notes, it provides capital funding for the initial phase of the police facility project, acquisition of fire equipment, and also allows for spending these proceeds on road improvements. We conducted the sale of the notes this morning. A total of six bids were received. The winning bid was submitted by FHN Financial Capital Markets out of Memphis, Tennessee. The final true interest cost came at 3.9633%. The total net principal and interest over the 20-year life of the notes was $12,735,733. That total net principal and interest is $1,224,111 less than the pre-sale estimate that we presented last month. I'll walk through the details of the sale transaction. We've included our bid tabulation, which shows all of the bids that were received. Again, the winning bid was from FHN Financial Capital Markets. We were able to downsize the issue based on the final issuance expenses. So the dollar amount that was just referenced in the motion is the final borrowing amount, which is less than what was on your agenda, which is fine. You can always borrow less than the preliminary amount identified. So we'll see in our sources and uses, we've identified the amount that's for the police station and fire equipment. Then we factor in cash that was applied in the debt service fund to downsize the issue. And then final, all the issuance expenses, so the final amount that you're authorizing this evening is $8,790,000, which is $240,000 less than what you initially had authorized. So you get the same amount for project costs, but have to issue less debt to pay for them, which is a good outcome. In terms of the final debt service structure and payments, that is summarized here on the table. The fire, police station improvements are amortized over a 20-year period. The fire truck acquisition was amortized over a 10-year period. Again, the total principal and interest cost for the notes over 20 years is approximately $12,735,000. Again, that's $1,224,000 less than what we'd estimated. So interest rates came in more favorably than what we had projected. As we typically do when the city borrows money, we look at debt issuance in a multi-year context. So we've shown not only the 2024 notes that are on your agenda for consideration, but we've also modeled out future capital borrowings from 2025 through 2032. This analysis will be updated next month when the new version of the capital improvement plan is available. But just looking at the plan as it existed last year, carried forward, if you financed all of the capital improvement projects identified in the CIP, the levy for debt service would increase approximately $225,000 per year over the planning period for those capital projects. So next year's levy for debt service is projected to increase by $228,450, be it a comparable amount if you funded everything in the CIP through 2032. So the debt is structured to have a consistent levy impact year over year for planning purposes. This note issue is general obligation debt of the city. The amount of general obligation debt principal outstanding is limited under state statute. That cannot exceed 5% of the city's total equalized value. You ended fiscal year 2023 at 20% of your limit. We're projecting with these notes and some growth in your equalized value, you'll remain at 20% of your limit. So you're at a very healthy debt margin, so you have 244 million of future borrowing capacity available. That doesn't mean you should borrow that amount, that just shows legally what you have available should you need it. And last, but certainly not least, is mentioning the good news that was released late last week, and that is that the city was upgraded by Moody's Investor Services from AA1 to AAA. The city is now one of five cities in Wisconsin that Moody's rates as AAA. So it's a tremendous accomplishment. As I told the finance committee, I have the privilege of sitting through many and participating in many rating presentations with rating agencies, and I mean this sincerely, the presentation that the staff here at Fitchburg puts together is really in a class of its own. It's very thorough, very detailed, and the staff really puts forth a very good financial summary and overview of all the economic development activity here in Fitchburg. I want to commend Chad, Misty, Mike, Joyce, all the staff that have a role in putting that presentation together. Your efforts are certainly recognized and well-deserved. This year, we invited Moody's up to the city to do a tour in addition to the presentation of financial information, and that tour really helped pay dividends in terms of giving the rating analysts a opportunity to see all the growth and development here in Fitchburg. And so that really helped solidify a lot of the good things that have been going on here for years. So I want to congratulate the city, staff, all of you as governing body of the city for really a tremendous job. It's a, really a great accomplishment to be recognized and be in that elite category of the AAA. It's certainly already paid off, and talking with the lead underwriter today, estimated that that saved the city about 15 basis points on your interest rates. One basis point is 0.01%, so conservatively, that saved you at least $100,000 in debt service costs, so you'll continue to see the benefit of that for future debt issuances with that AAA rating. So to again recap, the final borrowing amount is the $8,790,000 based off of the final bid sale results today. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Any question? Dave?
Greg, is that like the susceptible bidder, is that insurance company that would typically, you know, have annuities or whatever? Is that, is that what you would envision? I know they don't have to tell you their business, but I'm guessing it's a financial instrument.
Yeah, so are you asking who typically purchases the bonds?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, you know, typically underwriters, I mean, you saw national interest in the notes today, so you had good interest from across the country. Typically, they're selling those to what are called institutional investors, so they may be insurance companies. Other sophisticated investors are looking to kind of purchase those bonds. So yes, you're right, they don't disclose to us directly who they're selling it to, but we've used the competitive sale process historically here in Fitchburg because you can kind of, you know, get a broader interest in your notes and, you know, really awarding the sale to who provides you the lowest interest cost, which is very similar to how you would bid a public works project.
Any other comment, question? No? So I want to say thank you, Greg, and Ellers, you know, financial, because you have been, you know, during the last 30 years, our financial advisor, and, you know, and, you know, because of you, too, we, we're so, you know, are your guidance and support. We are AAA, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Happy to play a small role.
Okay, so we are ready to vote. All those in favor of Resolution R dash 102 dash 24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. So next, we are going to the administrative report.
Good evening, everyone. Got quite a few things I'd like to briefly cover here this evening. Mike Zimmerman sent all of our elected officials an email within the last two weeks regarding a survey opportunity that Dane County has put out in regards to development of their five-year plan for utilizing funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Typically, that money is utilized for things like affordable housing, economic and business development, neighborhood centers, and access to other resources. Within that email that Mike had shared with the council was a link to a survey that you could complete in order to offer your feedback. I will also pass around that email that had been sent, and it also includes a QR code in the event anybody wants to scan that QR code with their cellphone. Some events of note, on June 3, the city will be raising the pride flag out in front of City Hall at 12:00 noon. On June 5, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., the Chamber of Commerce will be holding its Business After Four event at the Thirsty Goat. On June 18, at 12:00 noon in front of City Hall, the city will be raising the Juneteenth flag. On August 14, some advance notice on this one, the Police Department has identified the Police Community Night Out or Community Picnic from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on the 14th of August at McKee Farms Park. As you noticed, when you walked in, the front counter is currently in a state of remodel. That project was approved earlier this year by the Common Council. Right now, we're anticipating that this is the last phase that will remove and replace the cupboards that were there, the countertop, and install some glass windows, improve signage, and remove an obstructive pillar that prevents staff from being able to see the front door. Speaking of the front counter, beginning June 10, through a pilot program through the end of the year, City Hall hours are being changed. They're being changed to Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I'll be sharing some additional information with the Common Council via an email. The pavement resurfacing is continuing. Roads in southwest Fitchburg have been resurfaced. Some pavement marking and shoulder work still needs to be done on those roads. The contract will continue to move throughout the city as it relates to the contract that's been awarded to them. And they've also begun to do some curb and gutter repair in other areas of the city as well. Several thank yous to state here. I'd like to thank our fire, police, streets and parks maintenance teams for all of the work that they've done over the last several days with severe weather events here in the city. I'd also like to thank all of those, including the mayor and all city staff and others who participated in the Memorial Day Observance Program yesterday. We did move that to Fire Station Number One in the event we had some bad weather. That did not materialize thankfully, but we had a nice turnout there, and I see that some of you who are here today were also there, so thank you for attending. And then the last item I have, Greg Johnson from Ellers did already mention it, but I do want to congratulate city staff, our elected officials, and Ellers, our public finance advisors, for what has been basically a 30-year journey going from basically a really poor financial position in the city with single A rating of a bond by Moody's, all the way to a progression to AAA that was achieved last week. That is a collaborative effort amongst those three folks, parties that I've mentioned. It doesn't, doesn't happen individually by any one, one group there. So kudos to the team at Ellers for helping us, guide us through that journey. And then again, kudos to the collaboration between city staff and elected officials to demonstrate the discipline in order to accomplish that. Wasn't, wasn't easy choices all along the way, that's for sure. So, any questions for me?
Nicole?
Not really a question, I just wanted to say thank you to city staff who were involved in that. I know that entire financial process is incredibly competitive and complicated, and if it were up to me, we would not be getting that rating. So thank you for all the work that you and the team have done on that.
Okay, so thank you, Chad. So next, we move to commission and committee reports. We'll start with Plan Commission.
I'll have approval of Resolution R 11424, approving comprehensive development plan request, CDP 254124, by Jeff Hundley, agent for Wingra Real Estate LLC, to approve the Jamestown Quarry Comprehensive Development Plan to allow for a commercial and residential development on property located off Fitchroona Road.
Second.
Okay, so you will.
And plan approved. Yeah, and I can give you a summary. This is a, this is a portion of the Wingra Quarry. It's, it's basically where the mire was proposed to go in way back when, corner of McKee and Fitchroona. This is consistent with the future land use map. The general development plan as proposed now, although I do believe the subject changed, there's going to be four lots off of McKee Road, which are fronting the street, which will be businesses. Behind it, there will be another commercial space that could be like a big box space, or it could be like a row of different businesses. And there is also a multifamily, which is basically right behind the active, well, it's not a quarry anymore, but behind the Wingra facility. And the multifamily component is, it's a 6.5 acre, it's a Texas Wrap-style apartment, which is a four-story building. The parking ramp is in the middle, and then the units surround it, so people park basically on the floor that they live on. There's also going to be a large rooftop garden and activity area. It's a pretty cool design. And, yeah, the next step would be rezoning for PDDGIP.
Deanna, thank you, Gabriela. Deanna, do you have anything to add to this, or to comment?
No.
We're going to put the side map now on the screen, so.
No, I'm just here to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
I just had, the developer had a neighborhood meeting, and it was very well, project was very well presented, and I would say the neighborhood was in favor of this, was in favor of this project.
Okay, thank you. Any other question, comment? Bill, do you have a question?
It seems like there's an awful lot of parking involved here. I mean, when you look at the schematic drawing, something like three quarters of all the land is parking lot and roads, and one quarter is the actual buildings that are serving the people. And this is on an intersection that's got, that's served by two bus routes. Is this, is there really no way we can, we can get by with less car dependency, especially, I mean, the climate demands that we reduce VMT, and I don't see this doing that.
Is she open there? Okay. Deanna, is the developer here? No. Oh, you're there?
Yeah, I.
Okay, so one second. Would you like to speak, guys? Do you fill out the form?
Yes.
Who is? Oh, here, you are Chris Townsend, and?
Hey, Joe.
Oh, no, who's Chris? Chris, are you from here and from the other?
I'm from.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay.
I'm Jeffrey Hundley. I'm the managing partner of Fitchburg Partners, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure if you're referring to the commercial, the multifamily, or which component?
It's, well, I mean, the commercial there seems particularly inefficient. That's, that's the section that I'm specifically referring to. So the commercial, four lots plus the larger, whatever that strip center is there.
Yeah, we're not, this particular step, we're not asking for any site plan approval. We have several steps we have to go through yet, but the parking that we'll provide is per your ordinance, so it's the last thing we want is to have a parking problem with retailers, and it's hard enough for them to, in today's dot-com business, that when they are busy, they got to have adequate parking. So it's typically per code. We don't provide more parking than what's required, but we'll work with staff, work with Deanna, and do as much as we can that's without causing a problem.
This looks like about the same ratio as on the south side of McKee for Target and Hy-Vee, et cetera. Are those parking lots ever full?
Christmas time.
I will say, I think the Hy-Vee parking lot is pretty full. That's where we shop all the time, and the Target one gets pretty juicy.
Yeah. I go to Target and.
The Hy-Vee one's definitely full, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, there's, the packet here is like 150 pages, and close to 100 pages is dealing with the traffic. If we don't want the traffic, why are we generating so much traffic? I mean, like I said, there's, there's two bus routes that serve this intersection. This just, it feels like the wrong, wrong, it just feels wrong to put that much, you know, to encourage this much car dependency in 2024 and beyond. That's, that's my point.
Any comment? Okay. Dave?
Mr. Connor Bell, there's a large population lives within a very short distance of this. You know, then, some of them will walk, but there's, you know, there's thousands of people that will have less than a, two, two miles in a car to get here. It's not a, you know, it's not a, like East Town or West Town, when they were built, everyone had to drive, driveway out there. This is in the middle of where a lot of people live, and I think the trips, trips will be short, you know, short and efficient.
Any other comment? Bill?
Will the neighbors on the, on the north and the west be able to access this directly? Or are they going to have to, like, will there be like a multi-use path that will lead them directly here, which is not the case at, for instance, Target?
Yeah, it's our intention, and we've met with them and talked with them, that when we go through the site plan process, that we'll have some paths to connect the neighborhoods.
Any other comment? Question? No? Okay. So, all those in favor of Resolution R dash 114 dash 24, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one, Gabriela.
I move approval of Resolution R 11824, approving certified survey map request, CS 254324, by Ayesha Lequat, agent for Hoopoe Holdings LLC, to create a certified survey map for the purpose of consolidating two existing lots into one buildable lot on property associated with 2735 Rimrock Road.
Okay, did Plan Commission approve?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell us what is this?
Yes, so this is, we talked about this quite extensively, so this is the lot that's on the corner of Rimrock and Maloney. This is the certified survey map to consolidate one, one buildable, to create one buildable lot from two parcels. There is a, basically a large right-of-way that has to be added in that was unexpected due to county requirements. The original plan that the, that the developer brought was 20 units, which is what we kind of considered when we were doing the comp plan change, minor comp plan amendment. Looks like they can only fit 18 units with it, so we had a discussion of that at Plan Commission. We'll have to cross that bridge later, this is just the certified survey map, so, but definitely the Plan Commission had a conversation about how we could maybe accommodate 20 units. Few residents did come, I remember, if you recall, there was. Few residents did come, I remember, if you recall, there was a lot of resident opposition when the original comp plan amendment happened, but this time, they're very supportive. They like the new plan. They spoke very, very highly of the developers and the project, so complete 180, which is really nice. Yeah, that's summary.
Okay, thank you. And we have two persons who wish to speak, Aisha Lequat, I don't know how to pronounce Aisha.
Leacat, yeah.
Leacat, Leacat. She wishes to speak in support, and also her father Chad Ali. He wishes to speak in support too, so.
Sure, yeah, we were anticipating speaking in support of keeping the 20 units that we have kind of worked 18 months to come to. Our original plan was 24 units and a daycare center. Received a lot of oppositions, as Gabriela mentioned, and we scaled that back quite significantly, and now the neighbors are with us. The new site plan, they like. We have green space and some park space and all of that. So we understand that there's some requirements that might be in play, but we want to make sure that we have, we're properly utilizing the 2.27 acres of property. So we just wanted to speak in favor of that, but I do understand that this, we're not speaking to that units at this point, so.
Okay, yes. Do you want to speak, Chad?
Nothing much, just thank you very much. You already appreciated what are concerns. Thank you very much.
My apologies, Mayor, did we have a second on this?
Do we have a second?
Second?
Second. Okay, okay, okay. So, okay, so yes, we, as Gabriela mentioned, we had a lengthy discussion about that because we want to keep the 20 units in the parcel, because if we reduce to 18, it's almost 10% of the, you know, of the, you know, of the possible revenue to, for this project is going to be gone practically. So 10% is a huge number, so I hope that Deanna and her team will find a solution to keep the 20 units, so, okay? So Deanna, do you want to add anything else?
No, we'll have to work through that in the next stages, so we have some ideas.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, any other question? No? Oh, Bill?
Yeah, so what are the circumstances around the acquisition of this new lot, and will there be more? This is, was this the original plot of land, or is this an addition?
It's the same, it's just the official map.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's the same one we're talking about.
Nicole?
So, is it a correct statement that by combining these two lots into one, it makes the land usage much more efficient? Is that a fair statement? I'm kind of like losing what, what we're actually voting on, if we're voting on combining the two lots into one buildable lot, because we're not talking about the number of units right now.
Yeah.
So the combination of the lot is, and as we know, I've been on board of review, so I'm a big fan of not having 20 million lots. Is it just for, like, bookkeeping purposes, for cleanliness of lot lines, or does it actually facilitate better land usage and more units?
Deanna is going to answer that question.
Yeah, I can take that. So, by code, we cannot permit buildings across property lines, so what this allows is to just make better use of the entire two pieces of property. Also, just ease of keeping track of the development process. It's pretty normal to just build on one total lot instead of two separate ones, in this case.
Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-11824, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
I move approval of resolution R 11824 approving final plat request FP 254424 by Sherry Yu, agent for IAY Development LLC, to obtain final plat approval to replat one existing outlot into 12 buildable lots on property located in the Terra Vesa neighborhood.
Did plan commission approve?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell us what is this?
So this is the continuation of the next phase of Terra Vesa. This is going to be, as it says in the proposal, 11 buildable lots. They're going to be zero lot line, single-family duplex units, which are pretty cost-effective to build and typically sell at a lower price point. This is in the T4 part of smart code, so it's a little bit more dense.
Any question, comment? Deanna, do you want to add anything else?
Nope, this is the third one we've done, so it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, so looking at the diagram in there, it seems like nearly all of it was slated for residential. Is there going to be commercial in there as well? Like, the whole area?
No, not in this, no, not in this particular subdivision, in this particular plat, there is no commercial.
In the, so in the, well, okay, so this is the one outlot, and it's just 11 residential, but it's part of a larger addition to Terra Vesa, and that's what I'm asking about. Is that strictly residential?
Okay. Yeah, this is in the third addition, and there certainly could be commercial. At this particular point, we haven't permitted any commercial yet, but of course, under smart code, commercial and residential are, by permit, are permitted to be pretty much mixed anyways.
Okay, any other comment? All those in favor of resolution R-11824, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
I move approval of resolution R 11724 approving preliminary plat request PP 254724 by John Thompson and Jane Bartel, agent for Thompson Engineering LLC, to create a preliminary plat to create 13 parcels, including 11 buildable lots on property located off Oak Meadow Drive. Second?
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay. Did plan commission approve?
Plan approved.
Okay, what is this?
So these next two, the next ordinance is also related to this. So this, we looked at a minor comp plan amendment a couple meetings ago. This is a property on Oak Meadow Drive, which is basically parallel to Fish Hatchery Road. It's an area with lots of townhouses, and this lot has been empty for over 20 years. The minor comp plan amendment passed to change it from medium density to low density, so that we, they could subdivide this into, I can't remember how many lots it is.
11.
11 lots, yeah. So these will be single-family lots that will be sold off piecemeal to buyers. There was, oh, because it was a preliminary plat, we did do a tree survey. There are mature trees, but they are not considered desirable by the ordinance, so it does not require a tree plan, but that being said, I believe they talked about trying to preserve the trees, if possible, because they do create some nice shade. And there is going to be two outlots. One is going to be for stormwater, and the other one is going to be, it's going to parallel Fish Hatchery for potential more high-density development down the line. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. We have Chris Thompson, he wishes to speak to answer questions. Okay, Chris, okay. Do you want to say something about this project, or? Okay.
Hello, I'm John Thompson, the owner of this property, and have been for 20 years.
And I'm Chris Thompson, I'm an engineering consultant for John. We've been coordinating with the city for a bit now on this property to get this subdivision proceeding. As Alder Gerhart had mentioned, this has been sitting vacant for over 20 years, and has been listed for the last 10 or so. It was initially proposed to be part of the condos that are currently sitting out there. However, that was in 2008, and that was not the greatest of housing markets, so the pause button was hit to kind of just take a delay on what the further decisions would need to be there, but it has since stayed vacant, and there have no been, there have not been any bites, I guess, with the current proposed zoning. So, the proposal in front of you is a result of the minor comp plan amendment that was voted on and approved previously this year, that rezones it to low to medium density housing, and with that, we have already seen some interest in purchasing the parcels. This is specifically to install the infrastructure needed to serve all of the lots, including water and sanitary, and a stormwater conveyance and treatment that supplements the regional pond that's at the corner of Fish Hatchery Road and Lacy Road, and that is to meet city ordinances as well. And with that, I guess, we're here for any questions.
I open to question. Any question, comment? No? Nicole?
So just to kind of restate what you said, you tried selling this under the medium density designation and didn't get any bites for years, is that correct?
10 years.
10 years, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? No? Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-11724, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one opposed. The motion carries. Next one, Gabriela.
I move approval of ordinance 2024-018 zoning ordinance amendment approving rezone request RZ 254624 by John Thompson and Jane Bartel, agent for Thompson Engineering LLC, to rezon property from PDDSIP, Plan Development District Specific Implementation Plan, to RLM Low to Medium Density Residential to allow for residential development on property located off Oak Meadow Drive.
Okay, we have a second. Did plan commission approve?
Plan approved.
Can you tell us what is this?
Yes, so as you remember, the minor comp plan amendment a couple months back was for the future land use, but this is actually the rezone, to change it to the zoning, so that with that plat, that they can sell those lots under low-density ratio.
Any question, comments? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 2024-018, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed. The motion carries. Thank you.
And I move...
Yeah, okay, oh, we have another one.
Yeah, I move approval of ordinance 2024-017 zoning ordinance amendment granting general implementation plan zoning for rezone request RZ 254524 by Fred Devillers, agent for IP Holdings LLC, to rezon property from PDDSIP, Plan Development District Specific Implementation Plan, to PDDGIP, Plan Development District General Implementation Plan, to allow for a residential development in the Swan Creek neighborhood on property off East Cheryl Parkway.
Okay, did the plan commission approve?
This, plan approved.
Okay, can you tell us what it is?
So you may recall, we also approved a minor comp plan amendment and a comprehensive development plan update recently for this property in Swan Creek, right off of Cheryl Drive. It's going to be a lot of single-family units on small lots. I think there's a couple duplexes as well. They're going to be owner-occupied. There's going to be a 10-feet setback along the streets, and there's a couple of things coming up later in Board of Public Works about like the vision triangles to make this development more, and also the turning radius, that's going to make this more possible for this development to work, so you'll see those in a bit. There was concerns from the HOA about deed restrictions. Staff clarified that we do not enforce local covenants of that nature, but told by the developer, they're preparing deed restrictions now. There was a traffic analysis that shows that this was not a concern, because I believe this parcel was originally supposed to be commercial or school, so the plan originally was for a lot more traffic than it's going to be with residential. And parked identification fees, there was a question about that as well, and it's already been paid in full by the land developer.
Okay, any question? Dave, and then Bill?
I'm sorry, Gabriela, I don't know this. Is this property part of a regional stormwater already? There's no, it's pretty dense, there's no facility here. Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
They are looking to do stormwater retention in both of those lower left and lower right-hand corners onsite, and then, I can't say for certain, but they may also, that may be, they may be contributing to some of the regional ponds in the area. That'd be a question we can clarify if you'd like with our stormwater folks, but otherwise, that's what those two green boxes are, is for stormwater.
Does it for me? Thank you, Chad.
We have Fred Devillers and Jordan Bishop, so they are part of the developer team, so in case they are here to answer some question, if you have a question, we can answer to them. We can ask them, so. I don't know. Fred, do you want to say something? And Jordan? This is your time.
I'm just here to answer your questions, but to address the stormwater, the lot was part of Swan Creek, which was developed with regional stormwater. In this particular case, this lot has a maximum of 54% impermeable surface, we're at 46. Anything north of that, you'd have to then have additional detention. So the two green areas in the southwest and southeast corners are essentially infiltration areas. You bet.
Bill?
Yeah, so we're going from specific implementation back to general, so what are the major design changes, or what's, why are we going backwards?
Specific was from two and a half years ago, when there were five duplexes, 36 units of condominiums, and 48 resident CBRF.
Okay.
And due to construction costs, interest rates, the movement of the markets, none of the builders that were interested in the duplexes, the condominiums, were interested anymore because they can't make those numbers work.
Any other comment, question? No? I think this is a great infill development, so thank you. So all those in favor of ordinance 2024-017, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
And I have one more thing for my report, if that's okay. We did approve a conditional use for 5264 Anton Drive, it's the old, it's the Mad Power Training. There's like a restaurant slash event venue that brought a proposal. There was a lot of concern from a lot of angles about that facility. In the end, we approved it with a lot of conditions, a couple of which, to make sure that the kitchen was up and running to begin with, and that it was primarily a restaurant. They wanted to go till 2:00 a.m. on the weekends, midnight on the weekdays. We approved it to 10:00 p.m. on the weekdays, and midnight on Fridays and Saturdays, and a whole bunch of other things in regards to parking. So, yeah, I can give you more information, come and talk to me if you want, but just wanted to give you a heads-up that that was approved.
That's it?
That's it, thank you.
Alder Gerhart?
Yes.
How, how did the owners receive that, those conditions?
Yeah, I mean, they definitely talked about how challenging it would be to make their business model work if they didn't, they weren't open till 2:00 a.m. They relied pretty heavily in their old location on those events that went to 2:00 a.m., so I think they're going to have to take a look and see if their business can be adjusted to work under these conditions. But I think it was clear through the conversation at plan commission that the conditions that were requested was going to be not passed. So, we came to a compromise that was passed so that they could consider whether or not they want to move forward with the business. I don't, I can't say whether or not they will.
Did they, is there a deadline for when they get back to you?
I don't know.
No, I don't know. I don't think so. I don't know.
I don't think so. I think the conditional use is good for a year.
For a year, yeah.
Like, one year.
I'll just add with you, that when they came before council or planning the first time, you know, I met with them outside after, and I said, you need to evaluate this, because 2:00 is a no-go. No one, no one in the city, you know, any of our departments, you know, you have to evaluate whether it works. I don't think we would ever change that, so it's kind of in their, kind of in their court.
Yeah, I think part of the concern was that they, the location specifically being across from the apartment buildings was really the issue. It's not that a venue up until 2:00 a.m. anywhere in the city is a no-go, it's just in this particular area, there's special concerns because it's, there's a neighborhood across the street, so, yeah.
Okay, any other comments for Gabriela? Question? No? Okay, so, thank you Gabriela, and now we are moving to Board of Public Works. So, Dave?
I move approval of resolution R 8124 approving purchase of 2019 Case 590 SN Tractor Back Hole.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. What is it? What is this, Dave?
This is part of our, our planned capital replacement. This will be replacing a 1997 backhoe that we have that is still, still being used. This is a used unit that they have gone up and looked at. Uh, they are anticipating, you know, roughly selling the old unit that they, I think they may get approximately 20,000 on that at, at state auction. If not, they'll, uh, try to sell it a different, uh, a different way, but, or trade, I'm sorry. Thank you, Bill. They'll, they'll do a trade-in on the existing, uh, this case unit they are, they are going to buy. It's not used, I believe the, the 1997 unit, uh, that we're retiring has 4,000, 4,000 hours on it. And this one, I think that we're buying, it might have 2,000. So we, we won't use it quite as much as the previous, uh, the people that had it previously, but, uh, it's part of our planned, planned replacement of equipment and upgrades.
And one note from Finance, if I may. The, they were over 50, over $60,000 under budget, so.
Oh, okay. Good. I like that. Okay. Okay. Any other question, comment? No? All those in favor of resolution R dash 81 dash 24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, the motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
Move approval resolution R 8924 approving First Amendment to Agreement for Subdivision Improvements in the Plant of Heartake Fields.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Okay. Did Plan Commission approve?
Plan approved.
Okay. Thank you. So what is this?
So this is a, a bit of a change in the staging, staging of the, of the project. The sanitary sewer intersection or connection into the Sain Sanitary Sewer, they encountered more, uh, more bedrock than they anticipated, or I'm not sure if it was bedrock or, or limestone. But, uh, they worked with Public Works to come up a little bit different phasing plan that will allow them to, uh, move this project ahead and, and basically lower, lower cost and, and simplify the project. Tim, Tim can maybe add.
Miss Tim? Oh. Tim, do you want to add anything else?
Yeah, there, there was a couple other changes to the subdivision improvement agreement agreement with the phasing. It was the installation of botanical drive between Thresher Trail and Blaney Road is being proposed to better accommodate the public improvement and private development construction. And then also the path connections on Outlet One are, uh, being revised to a different phase.
I didn't get that.
What is that? Which one? Mine? Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any other question? I have a question, Tim. Uh, is this, uh, it's kind of like a delay, this, uh, it's going to affect any other project, this? Oh, no. It's only specific for this project.
If anything, it'll-
Okay.
If anything, it'll help with the construction of the project. It won't slow it down and speed it up.
Okay. Um, okay. Any other question? No? All those in favor of resolution R dash 96 dash 24, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
This is R, R 89.
Huh?
This was R 89.
R 8924.
Sorry.
Continue, I said.
You, you said 96. You were one ahead.
Oh, sorry. R 89 dash 24. Okay. Thank you.
I'm anxious to get done too, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Next, all move approval resolution, or did we vote on that? Okay.
Yeah.
Move approval resolution R 9624 approving affidavit for correction to the first addition of San Swan Creek of nine springs lots, 109, 110. Doos the vision corner at the right-of-way intersection from 40 to 25 feet consistent with City-Fitchburg Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Did Plan Commission approve?
Plan approved.
Okay. Thank you. What is this, Dave?
So, um, originally this was laid out, you know, prior with a 45-foot vision corner. With the building, you saw the arrangement, arrangement of where the buildings are. Uh, it's being reduced to 25 feet to be consistent with our ordinances. Uh, Bill and I both asked Tim at the last Board of Public Works, you know, are you concerned about the safety of the intersection was our, was our main thing? And he assured us that, no, this should be a, a safe intersection consistent with other ones in the, in the city.
So can, for the people that are watching, can you explain what is a vision corner?
I will let Tim do that.
Okay.
I know what it is, but he-
Tim?
Yes. So a, as you can see on the, the screen, the, the vision corner is from the, the property line and it's taken from 25 feet from the intersection of the right-of-way line. So you can see from the corner of that right-of-way line, it goes 25 feet in each direction and they, they cannot construct within that area. Uh, that's to provide a, a clear vis, sight of vision at the, the intersection there.
Okay.
So it's, it's being reduced from 40 down to 25 and 25 is per our ordinance, the minimum amount allowed.
I'll just, I'll just throw in that those lines there, um, that's not the street. That's the property lines as Tim just mentioned. So that is going to be on, on the, the residential side of the sidewalk is where those lines are.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It'll be behi- behind the sidewalk. Correct.
It's like to improve the vision of the, the corner. You know what I mean? Like sometimes you, you go to a corner and, and there are some other barriers there that you cannot see when you need to cross, you know? I can see that in Osmos then, in Schumann and, and Seminole. It's kind of very dangerous, that corner. Okay. 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 Any other question, comments? No? All those in favor of resolution R 96 dash 24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. So next one.
I move approval resolution R 9924 approving revised building program for a public services facility.
Did Board of Public Works approve?
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second.
Second for-
Public Works approved.
Uh, Finance Committee?
Fin, oh, Finance referred to council without a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Public Safety and Human Services?
Did not approve.
Okay. So, okay. So who is going to start that, Dave?
Dave, you want me to kick it off?
Yeah, I would, I would like you guys to-
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, and then we have, uh, some comments, okay?
Do you want to do the comments?
Oh, we can do the comments, okay?
Let's have the comment first.
Yeah. I'm going to call, first I'm going to read one that I received by, because Patrick is watching, so Patrick Cheney, here I am. So Patrick, um, he registered in only to, to ask a question to the council. He said, "At the Board of Public Works, the consulting engineer state, 'This building will be full on the day one, on day one. What do we do in five or 10 years from now? Start on a $20 million addition?'" So that one is his question that is going to be responded later. And then I have Ari Lo that, uh, they wish to speak in opposition of this. So Ari, can you come? You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ari. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh near the Leopold neighborhood. I also have a certificate from UW Madison in criminal justice. While the city did promise to pay for a new police facility, we should not agree to pay more than the $35 million that we already pledged for that. The $35 million should be all-inclusive and since this building has a high energy need and is open 24/7/365, solar panels should be included. The proposal that includes any green features costs $39.5 million and even without any green features, the current proposal is $20,000 over budget. Some of my reasons for recommending that we keep costs to the, um, already budgeted $35 million include, the proposed facility would further current rifts between residents and priority, in the priority neighborhoods and the police department. Historically, we've seen that funding police facilities increases arrests and the way that this project has been publicly presented as an all or nothing proposal is problematic and residents haven't been listened to during that process. Spending this amount of money on a police facility is not helpful towards healing any community relationships with the police department. As a woman at the information session on 2/8/24 at Leopold Elementary School eloquently put it, "We given you all this money to build a building so y'all don't have to work in y'all's cars. At least you all have cars to work in. Some people don't have a house to live in or a car to sleep in. See YouTube video at time 1 hour 17 minutes and 20 seconds." I also find it problematic that during a public presentation about this new building, when I asked what a building would look like if the city spent only $35 million on it, the police chief told me that I am defunding the police. See public information session 11/27/23 at 45 minutes. This is unhelpful rhetoric meant to shut down a discussion and politicize a civil discourse on budgeting. It is a problem that public input and recommendations during these information sessions has been aggressively dismissed instead of being welcomed. Finally, US history shows that when you put money into police, you see a boom in incarcerations, especially of black people. This is a particular problem in Pittsburgh because WIBRS data confirms that although Pittsburgh's population has a racial split of 65% white people and 13% black people, arrests are made of 42% white and 54% black Fitchburgians. These problems are not going to be solved by building a beautiful building for the police department. These problems are also not going to be solved by better training for police officers because we are all fish in water in the systemic racism of our society. We promised the police department that we should fund, that we would fund their building up to $35 million and that's important to honor our promises. But expanding the project's budget is not going to help heal our community. History agrees that it's a bad use of the funds and the public discussions so far have been aimed to shut down instead of hear opinions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ari. Okay. So who is going to start with this? You?
Yeah, I can, uh, start, uh-
Oh, and we have the architect, the engineers and Paul all online on the screen. Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, this item was last taken up by the common council in February with original proposal that had approximately 80,000 square foot, uh, police services facility that also included a, um, a training slash community room as well as a training scenario bay with the potential for live-fire capability. When that, uh, original proposal was not approved by common council, the direction that common council, uh, provided to the design team was is, uh, present a $35 million project and what that project may look like. And the design team, which, uh, members of the, the team are available this evening, including, uh, city engineer, consultant Paul Woodard, Jared McDaniel from Pepper Construction, our, uh, construction management firm who's representing the city, and then Andrew Mile from FGM Architects, the design, architectural design firm that was hired, uh, to assist the city with this project. And then obviously Chief Morales is available as well. Uh, we went back and looked at, uh, the feedback that was provided and what you have, uh, before you now is an updated programmatic design. Uh, the chart, uh, that I have up on the screen right now shows what had originally been presented on February 13th, uh, which was about 80,000 square foot in size, uh, with the column on the right that is now being presented from a programmatic design standpoint, uh, which shows a facility of approximately 52,000, uh, square foot, uh, in size. And you can see when comparing the programmatic areas that are listed there, uh, what the, uh, what the approximate square footage by area breaks out to be, and you can, uh, identify where the reductions and cuts were made in, uh, this proposal that's now before you in relation to the, um, proposal that was presented on the 13th. Uh, you will note in one of the other supporting documents, uh, I can bring that up here as well, uh, that was prepared again by Pepper Construction, who is our, uh, consulting construction management firm for this project, that a 52,000 square foot, uh, project is coming in at a construction cost estimate at this point in time of approximately $35 million and $19,000. And they have also identified a sustainability improvement allowance of 4.5 million that would cover the items that were identified by the Resource Conservation Committee as well as supported via, uh, common council, uh, conversation and direction in February. That would include solar array, geothermal, enhanced building envelope and, uh, infrastructure to support, um, EV charging, uh, if, if, if feasible. So what the design team has attempted to do is to take all of the feedback that's been received at this point and put together a project that, um, comes in at 35 million. Uh, the design team does recognize that with sustainability improvements, uh, that does, uh, push the cost, uh, more than 35 million, uh, to as high as 39.5 million. We do anticipate, uh, that the sustainability improvements, at least some of them, uh, will qualify for, uh, federal tax credits and/or direct pay incentives that will reduce the cost, ultimately reduce the cost of those sustainability improvements to what extent is still not yet known. And, uh, one of the other challenges that we've had with this particular, uh, programmatic design is presenting a project that allows the police department to move into this space without it fully being occupied and needing, uh, an additional project in say five to 10 years. It varies by location here with the programmatic design, uh, as far as how long we may potentially get before, uh, a project is needed to address that space needs issue, the space needs issues. Uh, we're hoping to, uh, design the building through the schematic design process where some of those areas that might be more difficult to add on to or more costly to add on to in the future are hopefully appropriately sized to get, uh, anywhere from 10 to 20 years, uh, of use before space needs. Uh, there are other areas of this building that may not get 10 years based upon some of the cuts and reductions. And we're hoping that if that's the case, that those areas are maybe perhaps more of the office-related functions and that in addition, uh, could be a bit, uh, accomplished a bit more easily. I don't know if, uh, there's anything Paul or Chief Morales or Andrew or Jared would like to add at this point in time, but, uh, I'll wrap up my summary now.
Yeah, I would like to hear from Paul. Yes. Paul?
Chad's pretty well summarized, uh, what was done in the, in the process. I wouldn't want to make further add what, other than what Chad has. I'd just echo the same thing he said.
Okay. I open to question. Who has? Joe? Okay. Joe, okay.
Chad, I just have one question for you about the sustainability features. Um, just provided there were no incentives for them, um, how long do you anticipate, or this might be a Paul question, how long do you anticipate they would pay themselves off in energy cost savings?
That one is definitely out of my, uh, area of expertise, Joe, so I won't even venture a guess there. I don't know if anybody on the design team has any information that they could offer on that.
I, I could take a stab at it, but, uh, Joe, I don't think we have enough information at this point to make those calculations yet. Uh, really, right now, we're just in the, the space needs programming stage, so we haven't even determined, um, what the, the true loads on the building systems are and thus understanding ROI. So right now, we don't have any, uh, enough information to make that determination.
Dave?
Just wanted to add one thing, you know, the, uh, if you look at the Midwest Independent System Operator, which runs the electric grid in the upper Midwest, they, they show the amount of renewables on, on the system and they show that the solar over the past several years, its capacity is at about 15%, meaning if you put in a 100 kilowatt, uh, solar panel, you'd get the equivalent of 15, 15 kilowatts out of that round the clock. I mean, you have 15% capacity. the clock. I mean, you have fifteen percent capacity. So that essentially it means, you know, whatever load that is, now you could supply it fifteen percent of the time, the other eighty-five percent of the time, we'd have to get from MG&E. And so what I would propose, instead of us owning those, and that's with a, that's with a tracking, you know, that's with a tracking solar panel, most time on buildings that are fixed, I would advocate buying the capacity, the full solar capacity you need from MG&E. They have solar farms, you know, all over the place. Buy the capacity, as many kilowatt hours as you need, then we're not dealing with replacing inverters or solar cells at the end of their, end of their life.
Okay, who, oh, Joe?
Follow-up questions that I had. Thanks for the perspective, Dave. I appreciate it. Would, would it be possible on a project like this to purchase solar panels later? Or is this a, you gotta get it while you're building in order to make it work? I'm just thinking in terms of like wanting to approve something, knowing that what the payoff is going to be and how long it takes to pay off. I have solar panels in my home, and I think when I did the estimate with full spectrum, they said it would take like ten years after incentives to pay like the cost of it off. So I'm just, I know technology's changed and it's a home versus a, you know, a public facility, but yeah, back to my original question, would, would it be possible to add something like solar panels in the future?
Yeah, we would definitely do something like we did at the library where we didn't put them on initially, but we made provisions for them. We actually incorporated some conduits in the building and we put the infrastructure in, if you will, to accommodate future solar panels, but they were not built with the original building. So if the decision was not to put solar panels on this building at this time, we would design it such that you could add them later, both from a roof loading standpoint and also be able to get, you know, necessary cables or, you know, electrical lines up to the facility.
Okay, I have Gabrielle and then Dave, and then Nicole.
Just a comment on the RCC conversation when we talked about, about the sustainability features. I think the two pieces that we thought were most important was the geothermal and the passive elements, because those are two things you can't put in afterward. So solar panels are great, but again, like we just said, it can be added later. So that was always the priority. I'm hoping that that four-point-five we talked about back when the building was eighty thousand square feet, I'm hoping that perhaps with a facility that's in the fifty-two thousand square feet range, those costs will go down as well.
And also, yeah, direct payment is like a thirty percent that, you know, revate.
Yeah, and there's a lot of money from, for solar, and I think for coming through like the Inflation Reduction Act, and there's a lot out there right now, so this timing could be fairly good.
Dave?
Joe, you know, I'll address your question a little bit different. If you were going to put them on, I would advocate doing it right off the bat, because then you optimize the age of the roof and your solar panels. The last thing you want is to have your roof wear out before your solar panels wear out or vice, vice versa. So if it is going to be done, it makes, I feel it makes more sense to pair them, to pair them together, but I'm not saying for putting them on, but that's the decision of the council. I think you should do it right off the bat.
Okay, Nicole?
Yeah, I have two main questions. The first was, when this was introduced, Board of Public Works said yes, Finance Committee had no opinion, and Public Safety and Human Services said no. Could council members who sit on those committees please provide more information as to why Finance chose to not give a recommendation and why Public Safety and Human Services said no?
Okay, Finance?
We had a short conversation in Finance. I advocated for referring it just because I had a lot of questions too, but I felt that that discussion should be had with the whole council, and that without that full conversation, I didn't feel confident in taking a vote. So I encourage that. And we've done that several times in Finance when there's something that's literally going to be in a few hours, we're going to talk about it at council. Felt it was easier just to refer it.
And then who is the chair of, you, Dave?
Public Safety, Nicole, I can't say I voted for it. Jay was one. Donald, Donald can give you his opinion. I didn't, we didn't really ask him at council or at Public Safety.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that Jay and I brought up was the community input for the second time around of the schematics that I've seen. There wasn't a lot of input from the community being able to weigh in on this option as it was with the series of meetings that they had. And I attended almost all of those first ones, and I would have loved to see that happen again just before, as we're moving forward with this process and letting the residents get to weigh in on this opportunity as well. So that was the thing about in Public Works, what Jay and I didn't get to see.
Okay, Chad?
I'll just offer where we're at currently and how this particular item in front of the council differs from the previous proposal that was shared in February is, the previous proposal included both programmatic and schematic design, and in schematic design is where the building footprint is put forth as well as the building exterior design. So it kind of starts to come to life, and you can really kind of visualize what there is. In this particular case, all you see in front of you is programmatic design, and that was done largely because of the uncertainty of where, where we would get approval or if we would get approval for the programmatic design. We know that it will cost additional money to do the second round of schematic design, and I for one did not feel it was a prudent use of financial resources to authorize that second schematic design to be done without the programmatic design having been approved. So if the Common Council were to approve this programmatic design, that would then authorize the design team or direct the design team to move on to the next phase, which would be the schematic design, where, you know, the building will start to have some visualization to it between the floor plan and what the exterior dimensions will look like. I will point out, some of the cost-cutting measures that were taken for this particular proposal in front of you include reducing the size of the building from, on height. It's going to, instead of a two-story building, it's going to be a one-story building, which could potentially, as I understand it, and anybody on the design team can correct me if I'm wrong, may actually allow for a more robust solar array to be placed on the roof because there'll be more surface area of roof with a one-story design as well. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that that's the reason why there has not necessarily been any public input at this point in the process where we currently are.
Are we planning, when we move to the schematic design, are we planning to have public input again or no?
I think that can be at the direction of the Common Council and what you'd like to see.
Okay.
For my second question, I do really appreciate that I feel like the team has come back with, you know, unless my math might be off, but like twenty-five to thirty thousand square feet less. I appreciate that that feedback was taken seriously and with prudence. I'm concerned at the statement that it will be full on day one. What is the current square footage available now?
It's about seventeen thousand?
Seventeen, like one seven?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess that's my only concern. If we're saying a building that's seventeen thousand, and I understand it's at critical capacity, like nobody has really come forward saying they're comfortable in the building that they're in, but if we're saying seventeen thousand is critical capacity and fifty thousand is full on day one, that leads me to be concerned that we're not using this space super well. And so I'd love to hear from the architects how more than doubling the square footage leads us to be full on day one. That math just isn't adding up for me.
Okay, Andrew, can you comment on that? Who?
Sure. Yeah, so it's really based...
Go ahead, and then Paul, okay? Sorry.
Paul, did you want to go or?
Well, I'll just add a few things. So really, when you're comparing seventeen thousand to fifty-two thousand square feet, you're not really comparing apples and apples. For example, the fifty-two thousand square feet includes park, indoor parking, which they currently don't have. They currently really don't have a functional salary board, so that's additional square footage. Really doesn't, so you really can't compare that space. So when you say it, it's not like there's seventeen thousand square feet of office space, and you're doubling it to fifty-four, fifty-two thousand square feet of office space. There's other spaces within there that, you know, they currently don't have or sufficiently deficient. So it's not necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison. Then Andrew, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I mean, that's really one piece of it is there are spaces that in a modern 21st century police department, every department, especially one the size of Pittsburgh, should have that currently do not have. But then also looking at current staffing levels as well as future org chart and future staffing levels, even looking, you know, three to five years out, some of those future positions that have already been discussed, allocated, and, you know, they're in the plan as far as hiring, those positions will not have space in this building because of these cuts.
Okay.
And that's where Chad's numbers that he, in his summary, he came, talked about the five-year, the ten-year, et cetera, longevity of each of the different spaces.
Okay, so I am sorry, but I have trouble with the math because even if, suppose that we build this building and it's ready in two years, okay? So what is in front of us for new staffing is, if the referendum passes, it's only five extra bodies, so five new officers. So I don't think how five, or maybe suppose a six new officers, staffing, how these six is gonna, is gonna create that lack of capacity, you know? We are going to move to a building where it is a full capacity. I, you know, I mean, I think...
It's not just...
Yeah, so because this is what happened with the staffing.
It's not across the board. It's specific to each division within the department. Social work, for an example, we completely cut the social work office suite out in order to save space. So the current social worker as well as the projected future social worker do not have a desk right now. That's just one example.
We have no space for social work in the public safety building?
It seems like...
Like that's straight, that's very concerning in terms of if we're talking about actually serving the community, like that's probably the most concerning thing I've heard all night, is that like, and I appreciate you sharing that and being very transparent because that's what these conversations are about. But like, I just want to log that that's incredibly concerning that we don't have social workers in a public safety space.
Gabrielle, and then, Bill, do you have? Okay, Gabrielle and Bill, okay.
I guess I'm just curious about the nature of police work. Obviously, not an expert here, but we talked a little bit at Finance about how the previous, if I recall correctly what the conversation was, the previous design, there were fifteen workstations for sergeants, and now there's only nine workstations for sergeants. Am I correct in those numbers?
I think it was twelve was originally presented.
Okay, twelve.
So not too far off.
Okay, and then there's nine now, but you mentioned that there are already nine sergeants. But I guess all the sergeants don't work at the same time, right? So like, right now, I guess in the design, we're reserving one workstation for each sergeant. It's not, I mean, like, it's never fun to share, but it just seems like the different shifts could have the same, they could share the same desk, which means you wouldn't need, I guess I don't know how many sergeants work at the same time, so that's a piece of it. But I just wonder if there's some compromising in terms of items like that. Like, why couldn't the social worker have a couple of those desks, and then we have the sergeant share workspaces?
Bill?
Yeah, question on the square footage and specifically the building gross factor. So the previous gross factor was thirteen percent. The new one is twenty-five percent. What goes into that? Because just for reference, if you have, if you have a square that's one hundred feet by one hundred feet, and that's the center of an exterior wall, the wall needs to be like eleven feet thick in order for that to wind up being twenty-five percent more, or twenty-five percent of the entire area. So what, what goes into that twenty-five, that building gross factor there?
Oh, it's interior walls, it's exterior walls, it's mechanical and plumbing chases, it's basically anything that's not a finished space in that gross square footage.
So Andrew, you want to explain why it's different between the, you know, the thirteen percent of the space on a kind of more of, more of a...
Sure, the, the original design, that grossing factor is the actual of that design, whereas twenty-five percent is just the program, at the program, at the programmatic stage, that's where we're estimating on the safe side. Can that be reduced? Possibly. But we don't want to put the cart before the horse and say, oh yeah, we can get that down to thirteen percent again, not knowing what the true layout of this building is going to be.
But the, so the, it looks like there, it says subtotal is gross, department gross square feet at forty-one thousand. Then you're applying an additional twenty-five percent. So most of the things that you had mentioned were part of that department gross square feet, wasn't it?
No, the department gross square feet covers things like circulation and things that aren't necessarily broken out into the office's X square feet. The break room is Y square feet, and the conference room is Z square feet. It's things that aren't necessarily in those other line items that fall into the department gross square footage.
Okay, so the department gross to building gross square fact, or factor is both interior walls and exterior walls?
And chases, and other miscellaneous spaces that aren't accounted for in the finished room space.
Does, that include like common places too? Common areas, you know, like a hallway or, I don't know?
That's where the department grossing factor comes in.
Okay.
Ooh, yeah, I appreciate the documentation you provided. I thought it was really clear as to the changes that have been made. So thank you for, for doing that and doing the side-by-side, the difference in square footage between the old design and this current design. A couple of notes that I had for, concerns I have about what was cut out, three things specifically. First, the lack of a social worker space is a concern of mine, and I think that we need to have that, whether that is making space, carving it out of what exists, or adding a little bit of square footage to accommodate that. Number two, I think I saw that there's no more universal shower locker room. Is that correct? Did I read that correctly?
I'm not certain on that.
I was looking at page nine oh seven of the packet, which is, hold on.
Which number?
Page nine oh seven of the packet, which is page, oh gosh, it doesn't say, oh, seventeen, oh gosh, there's like three different page numbers.
Yeah.
It's the page that starts with one point one, shared police staff spaces.
Which number is on the corner?
So that's, yes, you're correct.
Okay.
Those have been zeroed out.
But I think it's worth noting, they were never part of the original program though, right? We always had separate bathrooms in the original build.
Well, we did have a very small space for that universal off of the main locker rooms.
I would say the locker rooms were separated by gender.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there was a universal locker room, a small one.
Very small.
Yeah.
Yeah, small lockers and a toilet and a shower.
Yeah, and I'm not going to push the gender-neutral locker rooms because this was a conversation that has passed, but I just wanted to say that part of the thing that got lost in that conversation was that a gender-neutral locker room would mean that everyone can use the space versus having to split between female and male. And so if we're going to say that we're going to have separate female and male locker rooms, then I do think you have to have at least one small universal locker room to give people an alternate option. So that is an issue that I have. And then the third one, which I'm looking at page nine oh two of the packet, did I see that there's like no interview rooms, like at all?
No, there are.
Okay. There are no interview, okay, but there's no...
You might be referring to the interview suite?
Yes.
That got mainly cut? Yeah, that secure interview suite is what got cut. There are still interview rooms in the municipal lockup facility as well as soft interview room off of the main lobby.
So there will still be a soft interview room?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So those two, then I guess it was just the two concerns, the social worker... space, the universal shower locker room, um, and then I guess the other, I guess, we just have evidence storage and um record storage here at the building right now? I just wonder if we could continue utilizing that and make some of that, because I, I know it's not ideal, but some of the older evidence that we have to store, is there any way to make that work?
Uh, I'll just come, comment on that if I could, Andrew, just real quick, I'm sorry, but uh, obviously the, one of the main reasons why uh the police department is relocating is to provide space for city hall, and uh one of the areas we are also lacking is uh storage space. So those existing storage locations will be quite helpful for city hall staff to be able to utilize for their day to day operations as well.
Sounds good, I'll drop it.
And the, the only thing I was going to comment on is um, that might, having separate uh storage facilities might impact your Wiley Ag accreditation, um, as well as, I'm not sure uh how the DA feels about that in Dade County, so Chief, if you have any comments on that.
I'll drop it, don't worry. You don't have to justify it, I'm, I'm done. I said it, I my piece, I'm good.
Okay.
The other thing I was going to ask you, that's, that's other, that's other reason is that some of the differences in the square footage is the evidence process, evidence storage is much larger in this facility than we currently have too, that's another difference. So it's not space that can be used for officers or sergeants, it's space that's used up for storage, for evidence storage and processing.
Uh, any other comments? Nicole?
I just have more, it's probably more of a procedural question, because like, I, I have a problem voting for any safety space that doesn't have a social work component, just like working in the school districts and understanding how important that is when you want to positively interface with families. That being said, I also, if, if there are small changes in accommodations like Gabriela, for example, right, not every staff person works at the same time, so can shared desks be used? Like, I don't know that necessarily that's our problem to brainstorm or solve, um, but if this team here says, okay, we came up with a creative solve, here's how we're going to make room for a social worker at this space, right, which would make me feel much more comfortable. Is, is there an iterative way that we could have those conversations that doesn't take, you know, a couple more months to come back? Is that what the lack of schematics allows us to do, is that the team can go back and say, let's add a little bit here or there and come back to us in, in short order?
Okay, um, let's ask Paul, can you answer that question?
I'll start and then I'll let Andrew fill out. I think, you know, if you're talking just one space, like a social worker, I'm just guessing Andrew probably around 10 by 12 or something like that, you know, I'm going to talk like 120 square feet, so, you know, if that's the direction of the council, as we go through schematic design, we look at, you know, what we could do to add that square footage in there. It'd be safe to say, Andrew, you know, it's not, not a huge amount of square footage.
It, yeah, it's a matter, I, I mean, at the end of the day, it's a matter of budget, so we understand the budget is 35 million, and, you know, where, where, where is the push and pull for, in order to get to that, obviously, we're going to have to be at or under uh the projected square footage that we're showing today. So to add new space, we're going to have to cut other space or increase the budget.
Okay, Donna?
I, I mean, my thing is, is just, I don't, instead of going like back and forth like this, we received several emails from like residents who are furious about, again, not being able to be involved in this process. And my thing is, if we don't do it at this phase, and I understand what you're saying, but we go through this process, then if we come back with the, the more in-depth drawings and designs that we have, and then let's just say we have the public meetings and then we're back here again as a result of, of what they have to say by not including that feedback upfront. So is there a way around that process that makes everyone more happy?
Um, okay, who's going to answer that question? A date after you look.
If I could, I could address that. If I could address that, um, you know, we like to give the public input, but ultimately, I, I need professionals to design this facility that, that do this work, you know, you know, I, I, at what, at what point, you know, I, I work in an engineering office, I, I, there's certain things we need, I, I trust our professionals to, you know, we're, we're giving them constraints, and sure, we're glad to show our, our residents what we're going to do, but asking them for, for more, more input on, on what should be in there, or what it would look like, I, I'm not sure at this point how much value, how much value that is, you know, you come in and we get the same rant that, you know, horrible things about our cops, again, I, you know, I'm not sure.
My, I mean, my, my comments aren't toward the prowess of the individuals who are putting together the designs, like I'm not denigrating those individuals who do this work, that's not my point. My point is, is that everyone up here serves a constituent group that has, wants to have a voice represented in this process, so we have to figure out a procedural way to include that in here. Also, with the individuals who are the professionals putting the facility together, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
I think, uh, I, I think based on the feedback that we've heard tonight uh from the common council, I, I'm comfortable speaking for the design team that will certainly take a look at how best to incorporate space for a social worker, and ideally, uh, the council will approve the programmatic design with that understanding, and then you'll be able to see how that was best uh incorporated through the schematic design process. Um, Paul, Andrew, you have any, uh, any thoughts on that? Are you comfortable with that approach?
Yeah, I think that'd work, I think, you know, we'll definitely have to get the public input to go through the process, but, you know, at this point, we're just laying out square footages of offices and stuff, I'm not sure how public, how the public would know what size this alleyport needs to be, or how big a, you know, an evidence processing room needs to be, and that's basically what we hired FGM to figure out for us, those sizes of those spaces.
I, I, you know, Donna, I, I think that we are working on a revised, you know, design, that we cut 30,000 square feet, so, you know what I mean, so I think they should go back and add the social worker office, and then when they have a program, we can say to the community, this is how it's going to look. Because we already got a lot of input in the first phase of this project. My only concern is, we're going to still continue delaying this project, and it's going to be, the more that we delay, the more costly it's going to be, you know what I mean? I understand that the public, but I think already, what we are working now, we are working on a revised design, you know, and, you know, and it's going to have the functional component that they need to have as a function, as a police station, but, you know, I think all of those, the, in the first phase, all the design, we collected a lot of data from the, from the, you know, the residents, so, I don't know, so I am not too concerned about that. I am more concerned about the price. Yes, um, Gabriela and Bill?
I had another question on the, the square footage. Um, so I went through the packet and I, I wrote down all of the um net square footage, and then department gross square footage, and then um tallied it all up, and it looks like, if my math is correct, we're going from the 80,000 down to 52,000, the difference there is 28,600 square feet, and the difference in net square footage, actual space that you can utilize indoors, is 27,600 out of those 28,600. So it, so going back, I guess, most of that's got to be attributed to that uh 25% building uh grossing factor. So are you intentionally being overly conservative with your net square feet for each of these components? Or what's the deal? Because it, it seems like.
I, I wouldn't say overly conservative, I'm saying, I, I would say, based on prior experience, we're being conservative, not knowing how this building is going to lay out, and how much of that 25% we're going to actually eat up with uh net to gross square footage, whether it be walls or circulation space, or uh mechanical chase space and other, other things like that. Um, it, it's not necessarily we're trying to hide anything in that 25%, it's that, based on our prior experience, we're saying it's going to be roughly in that range. The first round, we were able to get it way down, trying to be as efficient as possible. Again, we're going to try and do the same thing, but we, we don't want to guarantee that we're going to get down to that 13% again.
Okay, so it's, um, Gabriela, and then we are going to call the vote.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, I, I think it's okay to move forward with this. I, I agree that public input is really important, um, and I, you know, I regret that you and Nicole didn't have a chance to participate uh in the process earlier, although I, I know both of you were engaged, so I know you were paying attention closely. Um, I guess it's just, like, this is the compromise, like, we've heard a lot of input, and, uh, like, I, I feel like there's a lot of people, a lot of people on all ends, but I think the compromise, like, just to go with the budget that we have, and to like, do the best that we can, given those constraints, I, I think is probably where the majority of the city is, and those like little things, like, making sure that there's things like a social worker suite that we can provide to, as guidance, knowing our values and the values of the city and the values of our constituents, I think is, is a good role. So anyway, I, I think I'm comfortable moving forward with this and then seeing what they come up with, but, yeah.
Okay, uh, Bill, um, I hope it's a comment.
It is, well, it's a question too, so um, I'm trying to recall what the sustainability budget was on the original design, I thought it was two and a half million, and now we're, we've got a smaller building, and the sustainability budget is much larger, so I, am I, am I correct in that? And if so, then, you know, it.
It's like a, it's like a placeholder, we don't know exactly how much it's going to be, so it could be less, yes. It's like a placeholder that I'm going to include in the CIP, there is a clause in the resolution that you're going to allow me to bring this to the CIP, and in the CIP, you feel like it should be $3 million? It's $3 million, you know what I mean, but this is like a placeholder number for now.
Okay, so if we're optimists, the price will come, come in a little cheaper than what we're, what we're earmarking here?
It's a placeholder, it's between three and five, we don't know exactly which one. Yes.
I have one more question. Do we need to make a motion to add something, or, or is it just input is enough? Because this is just all.
I can assure you that we've heard the input on the social work uh space in particular, so we, you know, if you feel like you want to add that in, feel free, but I can assure you that we've heard that.
I would, I would feel more comfortable moving for an addition of the social workspace, just to kind of have it more formalized, because I think it is, it seems like we're all in agreement that that could also be accommodated, so.
So I'll make a motion to add the social worker space.
Okay, I had two more people that they want to speak, I have Joe first and then Jim, okay? And then we go to the amendment, Gabriela?
Give a second.
Oh.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so Joe.
Um, does this commit us to, I mean, does, does this basically raise the bar from 35 to 39? Is that what we're doing here? I mean, just in terms of, like, this is a budget amendment, right?
No, a budget amendment.
This resolution, Joe, if I may, this uh resolution, uh, if approved as written, directs the mayor to include uh the money for sustainability improvements in the CIP.
Uh, Jim?
Yeah, my, my comment is basically just commentary. I, I think it's going to come a time where we got to really sit down and discuss what we want our police department to do. I mean, when we get to a building and all of a sudden we're saying, well, we want a social worker, where are we going to put it? Okay, that's not the proper way I think that we should be doing things. I mean, we talk about reimagining policing, and we have a good opportunity to do it now, but besides people just coming in saying what they saw on the internet or what other cities do, that's not planning for a police department. And we really need to know what we want it to do. I mean, because police staffing is, how you deploy your officers, what do you want them to do? How are we going to take care of crime, social disorder, and fear of crime? All of those things come into play, and I think we got to start planning that out. And I have mentioned this to the chief, I mentioned it to Chad, we need to look at the workload of our police department. Because when I was in patrol, yeah, it was a long time ago, and I'm probably sure, we could get some officers to talk about calls that police officers shouldn't even be responding to. I was getting calls because the kid wouldn't go to school, getting calls because the kid wouldn't get a haircut. That's what's all going to police workload, and we just can't, we kind of pick at it, well, we just get a CARES program or whatever, then we could get rid of four officers, that does nothing. Pittsburgh Police Department went to in-progress calls and emergency calls only, and they went to a self-reporting system and an online reporting system. They expect their call volume to go from 200,000 to 50,000 calls. So if we really want to do this correctly, I think it comes a time where we really got to talk to the community, and what do we want our police department to do? And then we won't have to go through this. I mean, because I think that the building, I think, I talked to Chad, he said it may last five to 10 years. And you look at Madison, how many police departments they had to build, because you build it small, all of a sudden the city grows, I mean, um, Pittsburgh is the fastest growing city in the state, I think. And, I mean, we got to plan, plan for that. It doesn't make any sense to have a building that we're going to outgrow in five to 10 years, now we're coming back, because now we want, maybe want to add mental health officers, maybe we want to add other things. So I think it's, it becomes a time where we really have to look at this, and this council can do that. The mayor and the council are in charge of, of the chief, and the chief can be directed, hey, let's do a staffing study, put the money together, $50,000 type thing, maybe $75,000, let's do a staffing study in order to see what we actually need. Let's do an analysis of the calls that we're going on, and maybe we can say to, and tell the public, I mean, there's some calls that we're not going to respond to, one, because we're not getting the officers like we used to. Officers are not joining the police department, and that's all over the country, like they had, um, like they used to. So it's time to kind of put a process together where we could just stop picking at this, you know, because somebody wants one thing, and all of a sudden we got to take it from the police department and everything else like that. Let's really put a, together a plan on how we're going to police this city.
Okay, Jim, I, I think you make a good point. I think the staffing plan was done last year for Baker Thiel, so we have an idea about the, the.
No, no, that's not a staffing plan for the police department. I'm talking about analysis of call data.
Okay, that one is different, yeah, the analysis of the call, so that one is a good idea, and I think that, yes, I think that's something that we need to explore, and we should ask the police department, because I know that the city of Madison, they don't respond to certain calls either now, you know, they have, you know, I know that. Um, so that was something that maybe we should ask, this body can ask the police department, especially the chief, to see how he can explore, um, what you mentioned, I think is a good point, and I am open to that, um, and then, but right now, this is the money that we have, I know, yes, maybe it's not going to last this building 20 years, I know that, we all know here that. Maybe we should be, build this building with the option that in the future, in maybe 10 years, uh, this building can be, you know, have the option to be, to, to have an ex- expansion, you know what I mean? So that one is something that I, I, I asked, um, one of the meeting that I had with the engineers and, and Andrew, about how can we make this building, like, in 10 years, we can expand? Right now, we need, this is the money that we have, uh, and we do the building now, we build it with the money that we have, or then we don't build anything?
Well, Mayor, part of my point is, if we do, and I'm suggesting, maybe we won't have to.
No, I know, I said.
Expand, expand the building, because we'll be offloading a lot of other stuff to civilians or whatever, other agencies.
I think it's a great idea, Jim, I think it's a great idea, point, yeah. So, okay, so we have, we know what we need to do, because we need to move on, okay? Uh, Gabriela, oh, we have an, um.
We have the amendment.
There was a, a motion that was seconded for an amendment to uh direct the inclusion of a space for social worker on the floor.
Okay, oh, so all of us in favor of that amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now we have.
Now you'd be voting on the resolution as amended, yeah.
So I am moving to approve resolution R-99-24 as amended. Oh, yeah, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's do roll call, please.
No, we.
It was already on the table, which the motion passed.
Yeah.
And this is for the square footage, like, basically the.
For the, yeah, for where we have it from, yes.
Okay.
Let's do roll call.
So just a second, Tracy, so they had their motion on the table already, it was moved and seconded, they've done the motion to amend it.
Yeah.
So you didn't necessarily need another motion and second.
Do not.
Exactly, okay. So we are, uh, we're ready, you're going to do a roll call, Mayor?
Yeah, let's do a roll call.
All right.
So this is roll call.
So this is roll call on the main motion as amended.
Yes.
Alder Allen is absent. Alder Dancer Jr.
Yes.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbs.
Aye.
Alder Jutser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Vafadari.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carried as amended.
Thank you. Okay, so let's, thank you, and we can move to the next step with this.
O-12, amending Chapter 12 to reduce the minimum curvature of private roads.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Plan approved.
Okay, what is this?
So we saw this when we were looking at the, off of East Cheryl. We're reducing that minimum curvature. And it's reduced to a value that would still allow our largest public service vehicle, the ladder truck, to navigate those streets, those private streets. So that's, it was, it was, curvature was larger before. And we're reducing it to facilitate this. But at the same time, we can still access, access the residents with our largest vehicle.
Okay, any question? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 2024-0-12, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, the motion carried, next one.
Move approval, ordinance 2024-014, amending Chapter 68 to extend the 40 mile an hour speed limit on Fitch-Rona Road.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Okay, what is this?
Basically, if you're looking from Nesbit all the way to Tonto Drive and continuing, it'll be, it'll be a consistent 40 miles an hour on this road.
Okay, any comments, question?
I'll just clarify the conversation going on. It's going to extend the 40 mile an hour speed zone from, all the way from Nesbit down to County Highway. And that will be in alignment with what the town of Verona has also passed. That's a shared jurisdictional road. So both municipalities sharing jurisdiction will have the same speed limit there.
Thank you, Chad.
Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 2024-0-14, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carried, thank you. So next, we move to park commission.
Nothing since the last, we haven't met since the last meeting. So we'll meet next week.
Library Board. Library Board.
Library Board? I was talking. We were conferring on something else. Nothing to report.
Commission of Agent Will, oh, Donald.
No major updates right now. Just a lot of fun activities going on at the senior center. So if you can, get over there. I visit it. They are excited for us to come in and hang out. They have a plethora of different events going on. So I just encourage folks to get out there and support the senior center.
Thank you. RCC.
We meet next on June 10th.
Okay, Transportation and Transit Commission.
We meet next on June 13th.
Okay, Community and SIDA. Joe. Oh, they canceled the meeting.
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee.
Nothing to report, no scheduled meeting.
Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission.
No report on my end.
It has been quiet. EMS.
Nothing to report.
Healthy Neighborhood Committee. Who is in the healthy committee? Ah, Jay, okay. How's the Advisory Committee?
We meet next on June 10th at 4:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Landmark Preservation, no report, is Jay. Tree Advisory Committee.
We meet next on June 13th.
Okay, thank you. So next, we move to standing committees and reports. We are going to start with Finance Committee.
I'll start with a report. At the meeting, we looked at the TID annual reports, which are going to be available on the website. That's a requirement now. And it's going to be presented to the Joint Review Board on Thursday at 4:00 PM. So if anyone wants to get a more in-depth presentation about the TID status, that's happening. We also got an audit presentation from Baker Tilly. They completed the audit recently. They issued a clean opinion, which is the high level of assurance. And they kind of went through some of the financial highlights. As you can tell, because we moved to AAA, we are in very good financial shape in many different regards. One thing that's pretty impressive, I understand, is that we have no debt in any of our utilities. So that's water, sewer, or stormwater utility. We have healthy revenues compared to expenses and, yeah, in a really good shape financially. And that is the report, and I'll move on to resolutions. I'll move approval of resolution R-8724. Approval of lease agreement replacement of current postage meter with new IMI compliant meter per USPS regulations.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
So this is, I mean, the resolution kind of explains that they need to create a new meter, have a new meter in order to meet the requirement. So they're switching it out. And there was a slight fee change. It's like 40 bucks.
Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-87-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carried, thank you, next one.
I move approval of resolution R-9224, approving the creation of the Community Equity Ad-Hoc Committee.
Second.
Did the Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved, but there's no finance implication. It was just kind of a courtesy referral. So I think the mayor can introduce this.
Yeah, so this is something that I, you know, this is an ad hoc committee. I don't have to bring this ad hoc committee through a resolution, but I decided to do it because I want to show that the people that, the resident, they're going to be part of this committee, that they had only the support of the mayor, but the whole council. So, and this is an ad hoc committee that includes a group of residents, city residents. In total, there are 10. That represent diverse background, perspective, and experience that we look to assess, address, and advance equity and inclusivity within Fitchville. Their bio is included in the council packet, okay? There is a summary of the bio and the expertise that they bring to the table. The first meeting will be held on Thursday, June 20, at 3 o'clock, 3:30, in the Ginni Ceiling Room. And everyone is welcome to attend. And in that first meeting, there are going to be a draft agenda that includes the introduction, identifying the chair and vice-chair of the meeting, establishing ground rules, expectation, and the goals and the priority of this committee, and how often they are going to meet. It's an ad hoc committee, so there is no financial implication. So these people are going, it's going to be for a year. And then the idea is that this team is going to be working for, with a, you know, with a goal and bring a project to us in a year. And this project makes sense, then we are going to make this committee more official. If you have any question about this new committee, you can ask Sarah Olson. She's going to be the staff representing the committee. And also, the other representing in the community, the other representing council is going to be Donald Dancer. But if anyone of you want to be there and participate, everyone is welcome, okay? So the name of the people are in the package, but for the public is, I included, the committee will be Wendy Headway, Rosemary Del Gadillo, Janice Huge, Christopher Peguero, Jim Denham, Charles McLemmons, Dan Shouweraun Wong, Alex Shade, Ari Law, and Sam Burghis. So there are 10 people. Because in case there's something, someone, you know, always people, they don't have time or they cannot show up to all the meeting, you know what I mean? So it's to how would I start a group of people? So any question for me? Yes.
I'm just going to state my opposition to this. I don't think it's needed. I think decisions have been made in the best interests of our citizens for a long time. I've been on boards for 31 years, and I think I've made fair decisions. When I look at our decisions, I don't look at someone's color, race. You know, I look at them as people. If we look at locally, our state government is implementing audits on these type of programs. You look at our school districts, record number of people are taking our homeschooling or getting vouchers because they don't like this being brought into their schools. And businesses, quite a few businesses are getting rid of these programs, I believe. Christopher, where he worked, he was relieved of his job at that. So I think this is more divisive than it is anything. I don't, Ari is on here who believes that all the problems in our city are from systemic racism. I challenge that view. It irritates the hell out of me. And our residents, this is more divisive. We have a good city, people work together. And I don't think this brings any benefit. If we want to put a statement on all the things we approve, that our alders need to be considering equity, equity in their decisions. We can put that right in our ordinances. But I don't see anything coming out of this that is not going to divide us more than unite us. That's all.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Joe, and then Nicole, and then Donald.
Alder Herbs, based on your comments last week in our committee of the whole meeting about Spanish speakers not being voters, I think that's a perfect example of why we need an equity lens in the decisions that we make. My question is, I know Sarah's not here, but are we going to, Mayor, do you envision this committee building off of some of the work that HR and the Diversity Committee, that staff has been a part of, kind of continuing that work and moving it forward?
Yes, it's going to be part of that, of course. You know, for the new alders, the city internally has a group called the Employee Resource Group. And they do, they talk a lot about these issues. So the other thing I want to mention, Dave, is this is not about, you know, this committee is more about looking at everything that we built, every policy that we create, every procedure that we do with, to be sure that we're including and welcoming all the voices. That's it. I'm going to give you an example of something that we never thought. When we build the library, you know, if we had a committee like that, they will say, that place is the wrong place to build a library, okay? So this is what we are trying to do, is looking with that type of, you know, how we can, the city can improve, looking with that, the equity lens and connectivity, and making sure that everyone is, all the voices are included on the table, everyone is welcoming to the table. That one is the intent of this committee. It's a pilot committee, you know? So I think I am, you know, very supportive of that. And I want to add something about a comment that you made last week. When you mentioned that because some of the Spanish speaker people, they cannot vote, and they should, because they don't vote, they shouldn't be part of all the strategic plan survey. I want to tell you something, Dave. I was one of those people when I came to Fitchville. Because you know what? I came with a green card, and for seven years, I couldn't vote in the city. But I was, I bought a house, a purchase, you know, I remember it was the time of the library. We couldn't vote for the library, but we supported as a family, okay? I was one of those people. This is what I got so angry last week. I was one. And I want to tell you, there are plenty of Julia out there, you know, that maybe, yes, you know, we cannot, we cannot vote, but we are residents of the city. We pay taxes, we belong to this community. Okay, so who is next, Nicole?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in as a half Middle Eastern woman who has spent most of her career working in IT, that I appreciate you sharing your experience. But as a non-white male, I really appreciate this committee in terms of what it sets out to do. While I was on the board of the Verona School Board, I had a very different experience. When you ask students what they need, they very much tell you. We lost a student to suicide due to their lack of inclusion and feeling of inclusion. And saving one life was enough, and losing one life was enough for us to change our policies and our verbiage of how we talk about this. But I think the other thing that I really love about this committee is the curb cut effect, which if you look at any studies or look at any sort of research, it's the idea that, you know, rising tides raise all boats. And the idea that, you know, when curbs were cut to benefit those in wheelchairs, it also helped moms with strollers, right? You're starting to make the community more accessible and acceptable to everybody. And so I'm dismayed to hear about the comments last week. But Mayor, I really appreciate you taking this step. And I know that our community will be stronger for it and not weaker. So thank you for putting this group together.
Thank you. Donald?
No, I just wanted to comment around the comments towards education and individuals leaving the school districts and record numbers. And if we look at education data, specifically in the public school system, especially in the public schools districts around the state, the school, the districts and the schools that do equity and inclusion work the right way are the schools that have the best numbers and the highest academic achievement for all groups across the borderline, whether that's standardized achievement, whether that's retention rates, whether that's behavioral infractions, all of these things across the board. If you go look at them, that's what this type of work does. And by telling somebody, I think is very problematic. We got to be careful about telling people you don't see them as a color or something like that. Because that color and whatever they bring in that space is a representation of who those people are and their lived experiences that they're bringing into that space. So by telling somebody you don't see them, you're immediately ignoring all of their experiences that they're bringing in the space. And I just want us to caution us and be very mindful about that and what that means to individuals. Because even the, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but even the comments about the Spanish speaking. When you make comments like that, that's why those individuals don't participate at the same rate as other people do in the city. So we have to, if we want these things to change and we want a truly inclusive space, we got to embrace everybody and the differences that we all bring.
Thank you. Dave?
I need to address this now that you've all called me a racist, which I'm not. On any given week, any given week, I'm invited to a christening or a anniversary or a baptism or a, if I pronounce the word, consignera, the 15th birthday party by Spanish people in my district, who I'm with all the time, okay? In 1913, my grandfather, great-grandfather came from Germany. He had served in the military there. He came to the United States, had his family. And a letter came to his house from the Germans asking him to come back and fight in World War I. He had no desire. Funny thing, the letter was opened when he got it. Next time, he went to town to buy groceries. The merchants were allowed, would not allow him to buy groceries. And they told his cousins and relatives, if they sold to him, they would get banned too. My grandmother's sisters went to school. They weren't allowed, if they were caught speaking German in the school, they were disciplined and sent home. So I understand, I understand problems with discrimination. But I don't discriminate. When I make a statement that I said, in this, I made a statement that we should spend our, if you want to pass a referendum, your time should be spent on the people that are going to vote. I didn't say that I don't care what the Spanish people say. I would never say that. I'm with them every day, every day in my neighborhood. I take great offense. You're looking at me like he's a racist. I'm invited into their homes. I'm visiting them at the events at my park. I am truly, I'm just outraged at this. I am outraged for making the simple statement that I don't believe that, and this is factually true, that people that their only language is Spanish are typically not going to be a large, large percentage of them are going to be registered voters. Any country in the world, you go to your own country, your native country of Argentina, I doubt that the people that speak Portuguese are registered to vote there. If you go to Germany, people that only speak Turkish are probably not registered. This is not a statement of condemning one race or whatever. This is a, this is a statement that's true all over the world. And the fact that you brand me as a racist, not liking Hispanic people, they share four very common things with me. They share a Catholic faith, okay? They share an Amish-like work ethic. They share love of family, okay? They love of celebration. And lastly, they don't accept excuses. They don't want things given to them. They want to be treated fair and they want to work hard. And I share those traits with them. And the fact that you're calling me out as a racist is disingenuous. In the last week, I, I'm not welcoming? Well, who else, who else was talking to the Nigerian neighbors and invited up into their house? Or the people from Cameroon in my community garden and meeting all of them when they're playing soccer? Or the family in my neighborhood that is of Iraqi descent? Or the family in my neighborhood that is of Iraqi descent that brought me food at the beginning of Easter, or at the, on Easter Sunday? Or the Hmong family that I helped with their food cart? I, I am, I am totally, I am incensed that I would be considered racist because I made one statement that was factually true. Now get off the horse and get off it. I'm tired of it, and I won't put up with it. I'm a good man, and I work hard for my neighbors, all of them. And that's all, I've had enough.
Okay, Dave, I want to make a comment that I never call you racist. So I hope you remove those words for those comments. I always, I was telling you that the comment that you made last week affect me, to me very profoundly because, because I was one of those person that you mentioned that comment. And I always tell you that, you know, that you are very engaged Alder. I have mentioned to you that. And my comment is, I disagree with your comment, but I never call you racist. So I want this to be on the, on the note.
And Alder Herbst, I wasn't attacking you as a man. I was just responding to what you said. So it's nothing about your character or you as an individual. It was just the comment when we were talking about the equity in the committee. So I just wanted to put that out there. And there was no name-calling or insulting of you as a, as a person.
Yes.
Understood, Donald. This is what happens when you get politically correctness speech gets in the way of dialogue. That's all, I'm done.
Joe, do you have another comment, and then we move on?
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify, and this is the last thing I want to say about this. We're policymakers, so we make policy. We make decisions about the things that impact the city. There are very personal relationships with people do not denote blind spots. I'm a man. I have blind spots about gender. I'm heterosexual. I'm cisgender. I have blind spots about sexual orientation and gender. I am white passing. I'm Latino, but I'm very light-skinned. I have privileges over people that are dark-skinned, and I have blind spots that, that I miss because of those privileges. We're policymakers, and as policymakers, we are deciding on a strategic plan about the city. And we're making it very clear that everybody has a voice in that, that decision, not just voters. And every single Alder that commented and responded to your comments did not talk about your character, and nobody called you racist. Every single person spoke to the things you said and the impacts that they had. What you said was inaccurate, and it was wrong. Our strategic plan is for our entire city. It's not for voters. So listen a little bit more carefully to the things that we're actually saying and respond to that as opposed to what you think we're saying. Because I was very careful with my words, and I stand by them.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-94-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. So next one, Gabriela.
I'll just need to pull it up.
Is the annual budget?
I move approval of resolution R-9424, adopting the 2025 annual city budget schedule.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay. This is our annual regular?
Yeah, so this is pretty standard. A couple of things I'll point out to, especially to the new Alders, but reminder for everybody. There's going to be special finance committee meetings on October 1st and October 2nd, 6:00 PM. I'd save the dates. Those are where the committee, department heads will go through section by section and talk about the city budget. And it's the best way to learn about the budget and to learn about the city, generally speaking. So highly recommend. It's only a finance committee meeting, but we invite the entire council. And then there will be a public hearing at the Kyma Council Meeting on October 8th. And then we'll go through the amendment process. And I guess I should also say that the budget is released on September 20th. So, and we will have a committee of the whole discussion for budget amendments on October 23rd. That's where we have the full discussion. And then on council night, because we have the rest of the agenda, we just vote on the council amendments with limited discussion. And then one other note, so the, I think everyone heard this already, but the budget's going to be prepared as the levy limit referendum is, the levy referendum is not requested. But then there's going to be an omnibus amendment. So if the referendum does pass, the related items will be included as part of that omnibus amendment. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions for this? No? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-94-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
I move approval of resolution R-9524, awarding the fire department engine purchase contract to Reliant Fire Apparatus, Inc.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved. And I can kind of give you a quick overview, and then Chad can answer questions. This is kind of a redo. You'll remember, we already passed something like this. This is being re-referred as a courtesy to clarify that we talked about the cost savings of prepaying. Because this is going to take five years to get the, four or five years to get the fire engine. But we talked about the benefits of prepaying. We said it was something like 16% savings. That is not the full story. That's true upfront, but there are potential cost increases over the course of that 55 months while we're waiting on it that are part of the contract. So while there's probably a cost savings, it's not guaranteed, and there are things that can come into play. So we can't exactly predict the net savings. The staff to decide that it probably is still going to be a benefit to do it. But wanted them to be clear that there are, we are subject to certain cost escalations under certain circumstances, which is laid out in the additional piece of the contract that was shared as part of the agenda packet.
Okay, any comments?
I was just going to add that that information was not available to us until we actually went to place the order that had previously been provided, council authorization to move forward with. So again, in the interest of full transparency with the council, we thought it would be best to bring it back just so that you had a full understanding of what was taking place here.
Okay, thank you. We have chief here. So any additional comment?
Yep, just that, the eight pages that were included now were, they're given after you've, you decided to go with 100% prepayment. Then they, they produce a purchase agreement. That's what the eight pages are in the included packet.
Okay. Any other comment, question? No? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-95-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Next one.
I move approval of resolution R-9724, accepting an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and Dane County to analyze the feasibility of teen center.
Second. Did the Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
So Dane County put money in the budget to help fund the teen center feasibility study. They will pay half of all the costs. And so this is the intergovernmental agreement to make sure that that happens.
Okay. Diana is online, so any question that you have for this? No? Okay, all those in favor of, yes, Joe, you have one?
Oh, Mayor, I just want to add to it. One of the reasons why this came up is because the consultant, once we received notice of getting the county funding, basically kind of worked together, worked with her team to be able to identify what potential kind of additional expenses there may have been if there was more funding. So this will kind of help increase the capacity of the study itself.
Okay, your comment is for the next one.
I got it, okay.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-97-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
I move approval of resolution R-9824, approving change order number one for the Verona Road West Neighborhood Teen Services and Resources Feasibility Study Phase II.
Second.
And as Joe previewed for you, there is going to be, there's a change order to increase the costs to expand the study to complete it. But just to note that the amount we originally budgeted did not include that Dane County money. We weren't anticipating that. So we're still going to be, end up paying less than that was budgeted because Dane County is sharing in the cost.
Okay, any question, comment? Diana is online too. Do you understand what you need to do? Okay, we need to settle the vote because it's an amendment. So we're going to do roll call, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen is absent. Alder Dantzler Jr.?
Yes.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Buffadari?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. What else? Oh, okay, that's it. So now we move to personal committee. We don't have anything. And we move to public, huh?
Oh, you didn't want me? The meeting, the first meeting coming up, or don't talk about that?
Oh, you want to announce here?
Oh, yeah, we just have the first, I guess, I don't know. Oops.
Oh.
I'm good. The first negotiation meeting coming up Monday, June 17th. That'll be at 5:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety and Human Services.
So I move approval of operator license needing special attention for Keyshawn Webster.
Second.
Okay, what is, please, Dave?
So Keyshawn was, his, his license, you know, for selling liquor was looked at by the police department, and he had had a, he'd had a felony conviction. And so we wanted to talk to him. I won't go into it, you know, what the conviction was, but we believed he was sincere. And the board voted unanimously to, to grant him his license. He works at, Donald, do you recall? It was Kelly's Market?
On Fish Atchery.
Kelly's Market on Fish Atchery. So we had a good talk with him. We believe he's sincere, and we granted the approval for that license.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to vote for this?
I think, I think we need to vote, yeah.
All those in favor of, well, providing the license, approval of the license to Keyshawn Webster, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So next one.
I move, we table ordinance 2024 O-13. Public, public safety, we, we wanted a little more time to look at this. So we, we tabled it, yeah.
Why do you need more time?
I, I didn't, but I was outvoted.
I think, you know, I want to know, because this is a plenty simple explanation and, you know, update.
The chairman isn't here.
Okay, so.
Chairman isn't here, and.
Do we need to do any step?
So right now, they have a motion to postpone. Do you want to identify a date, Dave? Are you looking at the June 11th?
June 11th.
Council meeting?
June 11th, yes. Thank you, Chad.
So the motion on the table is to postpone to June 11th. I believe, Gabriela, your second still stands. So just for the, the history on this is this ordinance was updated to reflect practices that are in effect for today's city operations. We believe that this ordinance was likely implemented pre-city days and was generally utilized when the city was a town because it didn't have as many committees and commissions. So you can see that largely the duties that are being removed from the Public Safety Commission are all covered in other committees or commissions. For instance, the Commission on Aging Well would respond or be responsible for policy decisions related to service for the elderly. There's now a library board in the city. Therefore, they would cover the matters pertaining to the library. And I know there was one, and then Emergency Medical Services. Obviously, we have an EMS commission now in the city. So that's the reason this is moving forward or was presented for consideration. And obviously, we can, if the council approves the, the motion as made by Alder Herbst and seconded by Alder Gerhart, we'll have further conversation on June 11th.
I don't see the need, but, okay. All those in favor of postponing to June 19?
11th.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion is denied. It's tabled.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2024 O-15, updating fire and blasting ordinances by mending Chapter 70, Article 3, Division 2, Ordinance Section 70 through 57, through 70 through 61 of Pittsburgh General Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Okay.
Public Safety approved.
Approved, okay. What is this? Well, we have the chief here too.
So good evening. This was brought up last year based off of some issues of open burning in the urban service area by contracted services. So this will start off by Chief Pulvermacher. But all during this time, Division Chief Malekis, who's sitting next to me, has been part of this, this updating all along. So I would like him to go ahead and share what they've done up to this point. So Chief Malekis.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I was asked originally with Chief Pulvermacher to take a look at the Open Burning Ordinance, Chapter 70. After review, it was pretty obvious that the existing ordinance just was not adequate in terms of maintenance and actual applicability out in the, the community. So a rewrite was initiated. What you have in front of you was the results of that rewrite, and I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Any question? Who is first? Dave and Gabriela.
I, I just want to add, you know, we, we talked about this public safety. Last year, we had an episode where a resident called in, and his neighbor was burning green brush in his backyard. And the police didn't feel they had any recourse. It was a bad situation. And this, this addresses that situation specifically. So there, no one should be allowed to cause nuisance, nuisance burning that are causing their, their neighbors damage. After this, moving forward, it's very, very well-written and complete.
Gabriela?
Thanks for all your work on this. I was wondering just for public information, if you could just kind of summarize a couple of the changes?
Absolutely. If it's all right with you, I'm going to refer to my own document. One of the things that it does initially is it, it actually provides a definition of what is open burning versus what is a prescribed burn. And it provides guidance to the residents as well as any enforcement official, be it fire or police, on what is actually allowed out there. As a general rule, we followed the DNR recommendations as closely as possible, trying to create a document that is both fair and equitable for the residents out there. One thing that has come up time and time again, at least in application of the code, is backyard fire pits. We provided a definition of what is and what is not allowed to be burned in a backyard fire pit. We provided much-needed language for commercial occupancies that are using fire features out there. One thing I get as a fire inspector all the time is questions about what is allowed via the building permit process or the fire code in terms of fire features at their locations. A great example is the Addison. They have a fire feature outside. They're calling us for guidance all the time. This provides minimum guidance to them that is consistent with both the building code as well as the fire codes. Yeah, as a general rule, that, that sort of sums it up. If you have additional questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, Bill, sorry.
Yeah, I didn't read the whole thing closely, but does this address like those heating devices that you sometimes see at outdoor seating at restaurants?
To some degree, those are going to be generally managed under the mechanical code. But it does provide distances from the building that are acceptable so that we don't have an open flame near the structure.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 2024-O-15, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So thank you. So thank you. So next we move to the, um, mayor's report and I want to share that a couple of events, um, coming. Fest Italia is this June first and June second. You know, this is going to be a tournament, um, that the Fitchburg City is participating on June of first, three to four is the Fitchburg City Bochi, uh, Challenge. So you want to participate in that in an email to Jeremy, okay? So it's going to be in McKee Farm Park. Then there is another opening in District Three. Is the opening of the Bonbon Bell Bridal Boutique on June fourteenth, from four PM to seven PM. So, um, you know. And then, um, I have been working the CIP, the CIP is going to be, uh, it's almost, you know, we are in the final phase. So the CIP, uh, is going to be out on June seventh. Thank you to all the alders that they met with me to discuss the CIP. We started the process with the twenty twenty five budget with Misty and Chad, so, um, and then tomorrow is the, the, we closed the bidding from the hub. So we have, we hope that we have some bidding and, and the budget, so we can start with the hub on Fish Hattery Road. Tomorrow there is other, another, uh, in District One is a ribbon cutting for the circle. I think it's twelve o'clock, so if you can go there, especially the alders of the district, I appreciate that. What else? I mentioned, um, on June third, Chad mentioned the pride flag, so you can invite your friends, constituents that they want to participate at twelve o'clock here at City Hall. And then, um, what else? And that's it for now. We are going to start with District and we are going to start with the report from District Four.
Nothing to report.
We get to go first, that's so exciting. Just a few things I wanted, uh, to give a thank you to Ross, who's been managing the, um, Traffic Calming Committee on Osmondson Road. He put together a really great survey with his team, um, so excited to see that. Myself and Alder Dantzler got an overview of our Public Works Department, um, so that was super exciting. And then, um, I got to visit some of our scholars at the Badger Ridge Middle School and do a guest lecture on, uh, strength-based leadership, so, um, some fun things there.
Okay. Uh, Donald?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, publicly thank the city staff and all of the, um, veterans that were, and also, uh, John, uh, Sergeant Jonathan Parker, who, um, we got a chance to meet at the Memorial Day Service. It was really good. Mayor, you delivered great remarks. Chad, you, best emcee I've seen in a while. So, um, I, I really enjoyed that, um, event. And then also, um, one more thing that, um, was on the event. So if you want to come hang out in District Three, we have a, the Irish Fields Apartment Ribbon Cutting and the grand opening is on June twelfth and that'll be from four to six PM at twenty-five fifty-seven Tulamore Street Woods. So basically just take Noble Drive and drive all the way around and you'll run right into the, the new apartments, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, District Two.
Um, we are going to have a, a meeting, a Pembroke Drive Safety Meeting on this Thursday, May thirtieth at six thirty PM at the Fire Station One on Lacy Road. This is in response, there have been concerns for a while, there was a community action request and the city did a study, but there was recently a crash on Pembroke and Raritan that got some attention. And so we're calling the meeting to talk about that accident, uh, and the reasons for it. And then, uh, there was a police department release, but to kind of talk with the, with the neighbors and then also talk about the results of the traffic study, um, that we did and, and the potential future for, for addressing issues on that, on that street. So this Thursday, May thirtieth, it'll be me and, and Alder Jettser, plus Ross, the transition engineer, and Captain Hartwick, uh, from the Police Department.
Okay, thank you. Lil.
Uh, May seventeenth was Bike to Work Day and I accompanied the mayor from, uh, McKee Farms Park over to City Hall. And of note, there were two tri-shaws that carried, uh, a couple of elderly folks over here. And there will be, uh, purchase of two tri-shaws by a nonprofit organization, um, that, that'll be shared in the community, um, in the near future. I attended Tito Fest at Leopold Elementary. It's been so long since my kids went there, I didn't recognize anyone and nobody recognized me. The parking situation at the courtyard has been straightened out and the employees are now parking in their parking lot to the great relief of the neighbors. And lastly, uh, last week I, uh, attended Thad Schumacher's Rally for Safe Streets, which was, uh, he's, he's, he's running for state assembly and one of his platforms is, um, streets that are safe for pedestrians and cyclists.
Uh, Dave and then Joe.
Somehow, don't ask me how this happened, but during that enormous storm, there were all kinds of break-ins in Belmar Dunsmarch. And, uh, I, I, I haven't got the full extent of it, um, so be vigilant. The second is, uh, the McKenzie Workforce Center, along with the Boys and Girls Club, are having some wonderful activities. I spent the weekend, uh, getting these passed out in the neighborhood. And, uh, there, there is, uh, just a number of construction, diff, different, uh, uh, different activities. And they can be, they will be paid if they attend all of these. And there's, there's one for, um, sixteen through nineteen-year-olds. And the construction one, if you attend all of that, you would get paid a thousand. And there's also one for, uh, twelve to fifteen-year-olds. And so Chad's got these up and if you see on the bottom, there's the, the thing you can zoom in and you have to pre, pre-register, but these are wonderful, wonderful programs at a, at a great, uh, great organization. I, I'm hoping to hear shortly about, uh, last year the Boys and Girls Club in Public Health had, uh, a great program for young kids all summer. I'm hoping to hear that, but I, I spent most of the weekend trying to get, get these passed out and, and get the, the word. So if you, if you know youth, youth in your, uh, area that, uh, could take advantage of these, please, uh, please have them do so. And these are free and they, 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 they can be paid if they attend them all, that's all.
Thank you. And Joe, do you have anything from your district?
Um, not specifically on my district, so, um, I was also at the, um, Bike to Work Day with Alder Jettser and the mayor. It was a really great time. Uh, I actually worked up a sweat in a mile and a half, which is crazy because I bike a lot. Those bikes are very heavy and we went uphill, but the electric assist helped me out. And then there is a Wisconsin Resort of Justice Summit. It's going to be July eleventh. It'll be an all-day thing, it'll be from nine to four, it's twenty-five dollars. The keynote speaker will be, um, Judge Everett Mitchell. Um, will also have speakers from, um, different parts of the state on, uh, restorative practices. So, uh, you can go to, uh, Google the Wisconsin Resort of Justice Summit and it should be the first thing that pops up. You can register directly on the site, so. The registration closes pretty soon. Um, I don't have the exact date with me, but, um, please register as soon as you can and, uh, spread the word to folks that you are in community with, um, high school students as well as adults.
Okay, thank you, Joe, um, yes.
We forgot to mention, um, sorry, one of the best events in all of Fitchburg, Kids Build Wisconsin, was this past weekend. And whoever's in charge of that, I hope it never leaves McKee Farms Park. Because it was fantastic and kudos for whoever set up the, um, like car pools of the buses, whoever did that, thank you very much.
Okay, good to know. So the other thing I want to mention that I forgot is, um, first I want to, uh, thank, you know, the finance department and, and, um, and all you, all of you guys and the previous administration for, you know, for working very hard on maintaining and improving our movies, uh, rating. This is a big deal for the city, so we are one in five municipality to achieve this in Wisconsin, so, you know, this is great. The other thing, it was a great article in the Wisconsin State Journal on May nineteenth to talk about building permits. And they said they can't take a year or more. And then it's, it mentioned us that we are one of the fastest municipalities, so this is a good press for us. And so, and I say, I want to say thank you to the, you know, to the, what is it? Planning Department, the Planning Department and the?
Uh, the Development Team, which is a multi-department team.
The Multi-Department are working and I know that we did some improvements since, I don't know, in the last two years. So I want to say thank you because this is very good press for us in the news, so. Okay, I need a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Announcements?
Announcement, do you have any announcement?
Yeah, so the committee of the whole, I just wanted to say everyone, our next meeting's not until June twenty-sixth, but I just did want to say if anyone has ideas about committee of the whole, I'm doing some long-term planning on it. I also don't plan to have two-hour-plus meetings going forward, so FYI, that was, that's an aberration, that's not a, that's not a trend, even though it was two in a row. So if you, if you have ideas, please let me know, um, sooner rather than later. Of course you can bring ideas anytime, but I would, I'm trying to do some long-term planning, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you. And next, our common council meeting will be June eleventh, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you. What else, no cheers?